We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Is there anything that we need to report out?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 12, 2022. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Zekino?
Here.
Chalem Chirla?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Hal?
Here. And if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Do we have any agenda update?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is a revised staff report and resolution for item eight and a revised staff report for item 11, as well as additional information for item 12, all on tonight's agenda. A copy of those additions were previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
And we are going to start with business from the floor. That is the opportunity for anybody to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda. You will have three minutes to do so.
Okay, we have two requests to speak this evening. The first is from Daria Sayed. The second will be from Loretta Hedinger. Come on down.
No, the one over to your left. Yes, that's it. You can pull it towards you.
So, yeah.
My name is Daria Sayed, and I'm an outreach analyst in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch of the Department of Insurance, also known as CDI. I'm happy to be here to give you an update on the work we have been doing. I would like to start by giving you an overview of the Department of Insurance, the role of the Insurance Commissioner, and I do understand I have three minutes, I'm going to do it fast. So basically, the Insurance Commissioner protect Californians from insurance trades, make sure insurance companies have enough funds to pay, set standards for agents and brokers, perform conduct market survey, and resolve consumer complaints, and investigate and prosecute insurance fronts. I want to bring you our safer-from-wildfire framework that we have because it is the wildfire season. It's an inter-agency program between Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the emergency response and readiness agencies and government news administration. It is the purpose to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. We are working with CalFire, CalOES, the Governance Office of Planning and Research, and the California Public Utility Commissions. So with California experiencing devastating fires intensified by climate change, homes and businesses need insurance they can rely on. So Commissioner Lara is using every tool available to improve insurance for our communities. You have the CalFire framework flyer, one pager with you. And basically what it is that how we can ultimate goal is to protecting consumers by reducing wildfire risk in their communities, making insurance available and affordable to all Californians. So it's a ground-up effort approach for wildfire resilience, has three layers of protection, protect the structures such as making sure your roof and vents are up to code, the image it's surrounding is brushed too close to your home, are there any flammable items, and then also working with the communities, like firewise communities. I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that we are 1,400 public servants serving all of you, and we are here to serve you in any possible way. We have other programs that you have, the brochures for our California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, and we also have our senior gateway one-stop website for all the caregivers and the people. So I just, once again, I want to know that, want you to know that we have a website, insurance.ca.gov, and our hotline is at 800-927-4357. We have a dedicated staff of experts that can answer your specific question, and we take pride that if your question is, your phone is not received, we'll take two minutes respond time to call you back. We also take pride in whatever insurance you are having, we'll walk you through step-by-step process, whatever complaint you have. So I just wanted to reach out to all of you, and my business card is with Elaine. If you need anything from us, you know, we are here to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Loretta. Sorry, I should say, Loretta Hedinger.
I'm not a one-name person yet.
Close.
Not that famous. Wouldn't want to be. My topic is development patterns. The future is great unknown, but the past is a good indicator. Folsom has been and is a microcosm of the broad trends that have occurred in development of American cities. The overall pattern that has played out in city after city across the nation is this: A city is founded and either prospers, stagnates, or dies. Even when it was a poverty pocket, Folsom had a vision of prospering, and it has succeeded. But now what? There is a dark side to prosperity that has also played out in city after city across the nation. The pattern is that a prosperous central core spreads out in rings of new development, eventually resulting in deterioration of the central core. The Nationwide Urban Renewal Program was a failed effort to solve the problem by replacing old central cores with new development. It was abandoned because in the process, it too often obliterated unique character-defining parts of the city. For example, Sacramento lost its Japantown. California tried again, creating redevelopment agencies to address urban blight. Folsom used its redevelopment money well, but other cities abused it. The program was a sitting duck to solve the state's budget crisis in the Great Recession, and it is no more. The basic issue for central cores, ours included, remains. Prevention of decay is, of course, the best solution, but how? It's instructive to look at the preventive methods that have evolved for new development, and also to see how Folsom has twice succeeded in stabbing off decay. First, new development. Folsom attracted high-quality developers because we welcomed them and because we set cutting-edge, high standards and upheld them, taking away much of the uncertainty that developers hate. New developments in Folsom must follow overall plans that include city design review of construction and adoption of CCNRs to maintain the standards of the plans. Second, Folsom's most recent success. Stopping the decay of the historic district consisted of retroactively installing principles learned for new development. An overall plan, including design review, and in lieu of CCNRs which can't be installed retroactively, the Historic District Commission and city staff are charged with upholding the overall plan. There's nothing similar in place for the post-war subdivisions, and the same forces that invited decay in the historic district are at work there, one property at a time. I said that Folsom has succeeded twice. Adoption of standards for the historic district was actually the second time. The first was an infusion of capital when the city moved the Central Business District from Sutter Street up the hill to East Bidwell Street. Citizens rallied to save Sutter Street from decline, personally investing in the buildings and convincing a reluctant mayor that it was worth some city investment. Infusion of redevelopment capital was also a significant part of that second success in stabbing off decay. The perennial criticism of Folsom City Council's past and present is that attention is focused on new development to the detriment of existing development. New development always gets attention. Building new is an ingrained part of the American psyche. Though it's easier to start with a blank slate, the problems of existing development aren't going away on their own. The current budget provides services people enjoy, but where is the investment of money and staff time that will forestall decay of the urban core? Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. Anybody else want to speak to us in business from the floor?
You have no other request to speak.
Okay, in which case we will move on to schedule presentation, which is a presentation from Heart of Folsom, the Homeless Assistance Resource Team regarding the winter shelter.
Thank you so much, City Council, for allowing me to come and present to you the story of our winter shelter for 2022. We appreciate your support and interest in it, on behalf of both our volunteers and our guests. We ran this shelter, it's run by Heart of Folsom, nonprofit, here in town. We ran it from January 2 until March 26. That's a total of 12 weeks. The purposes of the shelter include just providing shelter overnight, food, safety, care for the guests, the opportunity to learn about their needs and their situations, to establish trust with them, and also to connect them to resources, both health within the city and other nonprofits and such. I did want to say, if you have questions about a specific site, please catch me and ask while we're there. Otherwise, if you have questions at the end, I'll be glad to take them. We had challenges this year. In particular, we had intake in a residential neighborhood at the Trinity Episcopal Church. That was difficult, and I'll address that a little bit later as well. We had varying COVID protocols that were, we were using masking and distancing as much as we could, but that did lead to some shelter sites that were really too small for operating. It's getting more difficult to find spaces to operate.
Did we, at any point during the winter shelter, did we have more people that were trying to get to the shelter than we had space for?
Yes, yes, in a couple of small places where we weren't able to take the full 20 people that we're allowed to have.
Okay, I don't remember hearing about that at all during the whole time that happened.
Yeah, we had a couple of spots. And many sites also needed volunteers from outside of their congregation, that they signed up week by week to be the host volunteers. And again, just, you know, people availability and willingness for, of groups to take on the hosting. So we ran for 84 nights. We served 74 guests for a total of 925 guest nights.
Is that 74 different guests?
Yes, 74 unique guests, yeah. The average guest per night was 11, and our highest count was 17. One person spent, actually, I should say, one person and a dog, spent 84 nights, and 20 of our guests spent over two weeks with us. Others were a variety of, emphasis on that. Weather, we had five nights of rain total in that three months, and the temperatures were fairly mild. When a guest first arrives at the shelter on their first night, we help them fill out a form that tells us who they are, where they've come from, all of that. So one of the questions we ask is how they heard about the winter shelter. 30% attended previously, 17% heard about it from friends and family, 11% from the navigator or another social worker. We have a bookmark that's around town, website, and powerhouse and other such places. We also ask them where they've been living the last six months, which sometimes is more than one kind of place. So little over half of them spent some of that time at least on the street. 20% of them spent time in a vehicle, 17% with family and friends, some transitional housing, emergency shelter, and a few other places. That's where they came from. The racial background of our guests, about 60% of them are white, 20% black, 10% Latino, 5% Native American, and some Asian and Pacific Islander. The average age of our guests is 43. The youngest was 20, and the oldest was 71. About 70% men, 30% women. 43% have been in Folsom less than a year, 28% have been in Folsom one to five years, and 29% have been there over five years, with some 6% saying that's their hometown. So we had a wide variety of people's experience and length of time in Folsom. 61 of, 61% of them receive food stamps, 43% had an income when they, when they came to the shelter, 19% from some social, some form of social security, and 13% had jobs at arrival. 70% have a cell phone, about 50% have email, over 50% gave us an emergency contact, and 10% of our guests were veterans. Almost half of them have medical issues. The most common are depression, asthma, heart conditions, schizophrenia, anxiety, and then there were others as well. And 24% of them are, have prescriptions to deal with. So that was on the guest side of it. We also have the volunteers who worked throughout the 12 weeks. We have heart volunteers, where people sign up for a shift every week for the 12 weeks. We also have host volunteers who will participate like for one particular week within the shelter. So heart volunteers, just to give you an idea of how many people are involved each day. Weekdays, it takes about 11 to 12 heart volunteers, and on the weekends, because we do our driving of them from the intake center to the shelter and back, is 14 to 15 people. We have intake, as I mentioned, where they, where they come, then we transport them. There's a welcome team at the shelter itself. We store their belongings overnight, so there's someone to manage that for them. Drivers, we have a morning team that comes in and provides breakfast and gets them going in the morning, and a night captain each night who is in charge of the entire process. And then we have 14 additional people, support people, leads, people who take care of supplies, transport from one shelter spot to another, carts, sleeping bags, technology, signing up for volunteers and things like that. The host volunteers, it takes about six to nine volunteers per night, depending on whether we have showers available and laundry. So there's a lead for that group, and a greeter, and dinner. Overnight volunteers who spend the night with them, a shower attendant and laundress, if we have that. So just kind of give you a scope of, of people involved in, in a night there. So as I said, we were, our intake center was at Trinity Episcopal Church. They were very, very gracious and provided indoor space for us to do all of that. The locations that we had for the shelter, we were at Oak Hills Church. We were there physically for five weeks total, with Oak Hills doing some of the hosting and other groups coming in for other weeks. We were at Lakeside Church for two weeks. We were at Community Bible Church. We were at The Bridge. We moved around. We were at the Muslim Center, Mount Olive Lutheran Church, and Harbor Church. And if, in 2021, we actually were only at three sites. Churches weren't using their buildings. And so this year was, was a big change from, from that as far as our mobility. Additional groups that were involved in hosting were Bayside Church, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Disciples Church, Reflection MCC, Trinity Episcopal Church, and River Rock We were, we were really blessed to have four restaurants provide dinner four nights a week, which really helped the, the host groups, Visconti's, Chick-fil-A, That Damn Place, and Chicago Fire Pizza. Were very faithful and generous to do that for us. We also had some folks who came regularly, and we interacted with regularly, Nine of Waxfick, the Folsom Navigator, came every Monday night to check in with people and meet new folks and all of that. The city of Folsom, both the Fire Department and Police Department are always just really responsive and helpful for us as we face different situations. Sacramento Rapid Transit provided transportation during the week, which was not easy for them as they had staffing shortages and all that, but they did it. We were really thankful. Hampton Inn of Folsom provides us a van on the weekends to transport our guests. Twin Lakes Food Bank provided a moving truck, which really helped as we moved place to place. And District Church provided a shower trailer, which is just a huge benefit to have. And Journey Church provided our space and all for our volunteer appreciation event at the end of the season. So they, all of them were very thankful. And we did it. We had showers for 11 of the 12 weeks. We offered laundry eight of the 12 weeks. We had no COVID spread at the shelter, thankfully. We moved the shelter eight times, and we were able during the season to house two guests in heart housing. So it's really helpful to be able to do that. We'd love to have more. So successes of our guests. We had six people obtain employment while they were staying at the shelter. Six moved into housing during the shelter or immediately after. We assisted seven people in relocating to their home area who were here but really needed to be with family or another area. We had 30 people who were assisted by the Folsom Navigator, seven people assisted by our heart mentoring program, two began sobriety, and one entered residential drug treatment soon after the shelter ended. So there was similarly positive things for some of our guests. Future needs: A consistent space for intake. Last year, we were down in the lower parking lot at the rodeo, at the rodeo, and this year, we were at Trinity Episcopal, but it was, we really, we really would like to have an intake place that is stable and not in a residential neighborhood for neighbors as people come in. We increased availability of transitional housing. It's really crucial. It's hard, when the season ends, to have people going back out again. We, we're looking to have increased engagement with county and local health resources so that we can provide more services to the guests while they're there with us, and increased and expanding volunteer base, both individuals and organizations, as we go along, because it's, it does take a lot of folks to put it on. And, and we just always need to be looking for a broader base of, of people to help and groups to help. So we appreciate your, your help, and we may be coming to you to ask about intake possibilities. And anyway, we appreciate your interest in it, and, and we look forward to 2023 winter shelter. Is there anyone, any questions on that?
Any questions, anybody?
I don't have any questions, but it's an extraordinary example of generosity here in our community. So thank you, and thank everybody that helped volunteer there and operate that. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm always amazed at, at all the people who care, who care about these folks, our, our folks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for doing this. And we have met, I have met several of the individuals that were clients to this program, and they were appreciative to have somewhere to sleep at night, especially on the days when it rained.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So great job.
I'm glad, I'm thankful, thankful.
Bev, I have a question. So it seemed like this year compared to past years, there were more folks who came from out of town. It seemed like it was a little bit younger age group than we've had in years past. Do you think that has to do with the fact that I think you were the only heart in the region who ran a shelter last year? Are, are those folks going to be, are other communities going to be running one in 2023, as far as you know?
There were, there were fewer winter shelters that hearts ran, but there was one in Citrus Heights, one in Rancho.
Oh, they did run, okay.
But they were shorter. You know, they're facing, as a matter of fact, we're meeting together this Thursday to talk about it, because, you know, we have the same kinds of difficulties finding places and volunteers, groups to, to host it. So theirs were shorter. So some did, were, did come here. I think there was also some communication between Mercy Hospitals that we will not be doing, that we will, will be stopping, that, that got out there where people were coming from, from farther away because they heard about it there. The, I think overall, the statistics would say that our guests weren't younger, but I think more younger ones spent longer with us. And, and so, yeah, yeah. It was really exciting to see them get work. It's amazing what, what work does for a young man.
Yeah. I, I mean, certainly, you know, I'm supportive of the program. You know, my husband and I volunteered last few years, along with YK and Marcus and others. And I think as a community, we have an obligation to try to provide a hand up to, to those in our community who are facing homelessness, but I, I don't think we have the resources to be able to take on a lot of folks from other areas. So when I start to see a lot of people, when I'm talking to guests, and they're, you know, they're from South SAC or North SAC or whatever, that's a little bit of a concern.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Some of them, they're there, they're there at the end of the day. But yeah, we'd like to focus on the people from Folsom for any, for long-term stays. Yeah, they're, but they're, yeah, and folks are right there that day. But yeah, we're looking into that.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could just fix the reference to RT, it's Sacramento Regional Transit, not Sacramento Rapid Transit.
Oh, sorry. Did I say, yeah, sorry. Did I write that? I'll check and see what mine says.
And their management team all lives here, so.
Gotcha, okay. I know. Thanks for the correction. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
Mayor, this is YK. I'm, I'm remote, Bev. You can't see me there, but you can hear me.
Uh-huh.
I just want to thank, you know, sincerely thank for your leadership. I think this is your past year, leading the winter shelter, and you did an awesome job in pulling all the volunteers, and also my sincere thanks to all the volunteers. I just want to echo what Sarah said, seeing the outside Folsom more at the tail end. Maybe when you have a next planning meeting, suddenly, you know, some of us will be there to give our inputs and see how we can put on some focus.
Yeah.
Serving Folsom people. I know, it's, you don't know that, we don't know that. No one knows that, right?
Yeah.
Other shelters were closed. But a big, big thank you to you for leading it, and our heart president, Judy, and every leadership team in heart. I know you guys purely are volunteers for months and years. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Thanks for being with us, YK. All right, take care.
Thank you. And we will move on to the consent calendar. Anybody like to pull anything from consent?
I'll move two through seven, unless someone wants to pull one.
I'm sorry, YK, could you repeat that?
Sorry, Mayor. I would like to pull number three, please.
Okay. I'll move two through seven with the exception of three.
Second.
Okay, we have motion. Second, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Zekino?
Yes.
Chalem Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes. And you said you wanted to pull three?
Yes, ma'am. I'm also pulling this.
Councilmember Chalem Chirla, we have Marcus Yasutaki here whenever you have a question.
Yeah, it's, it's a, not a question, it's a more comment, and also an input as well. Marcus is, you know, the best candidate to be appointed on this board. My only thing is how this council can get some feedback on a quarterly basis on this subject. So that's helpful for council, how groundwater system in our region is happening. Water is one of the, you know, vital commodity. I just want to put that out there. Mayor probably may have some ideas. How frequently this council, probably once a quarter, that's what I'm thinking in my mind, can get an update from those boards' outcome?
We can, we can probably have Marcus give us an update. I would say, twice a year. These boards don't meet all that frequently. There's two different groundwater agencies. The city of Folsom doesn't actually have any groundwater, but because of the conjunctive use between groundwater and surface water, we have been involved since the formation of the original Sacramento Groundwater Association, and this one, I believe, is the, is the alternate, which is the south. So, yeah, but I don't see any need to do this quarterly because, frankly, it's, it's nothing, it's not really going to be anything except data.
Okay, so once in six months, probably, we can get, you know, some update on what's going on.
But I think it should be an update of RWA, you know, all of the, all of the various committees that Marcus represents the city on, just water in general.
We can do that. Councilmember Chalem Chirla.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Since we're on it, we have Marcus here. Maybe you could just enlighten us as to the purview of the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority and what, what activity you plan to do on the Board of Directors there.
All right, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. So as Mayor House said, we, the city of Folsom does have three board seats with relations to water, two on groundwater authorities, this one in particular, Sacramento Central. with relations to water, two on groundwater authorities, this one in particular, Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, which is a South American sub-basin, basically south of the American River.
South American river as opposed to South American sub-basin.
Well, it's called the South American Sub Basin, but it is.
I know, but it's not in South America is my point.
But it is physically south of the American River within Sacramento County. And that includes the city of Folsom, basically south of the American River. Then there's the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, which is the North American Sub Basin, north of the American River, which also includes the portions of the city of Folsom, north of the American River. And then the Regional Water Authority, which encompasses Eldorado, Placer, portions of Placer, Eldorado, Sacramento, Yuba Counties within the region. And that's, you know, twenty-one different water agencies that deliver water. And so in terms specifically of groundwater, as Mayor House mentioned, the, the city of Folsom itself does not pump any groundwater, but we do have.
We have a little bit, we have a little bit at the golf course.
The golf course does, yes. The city as, as an agency does not. And so there are opportunities for what's known as conjunctive use, where surface water and groundwater can be interchanged between two different water agencies. Currently, we have an intertie with Golden State Water Company near Hazel and Folsom Boulevard, which allows for water to be delivered, surface water, treated surface water to Golden State Water Company. And in turn, Golden State Water Company can pump less groundwater, which recharges the basin. Or in times of potential need, the city can receive treated groundwater from Golden State Water Company, which if we needed that because surface water wasn't available fully or we had an operational challenge or we needed to move water, that is an opportunity. And then a larger regional project that is being conducted through the Regional Water Authority is a, what's known as a Sacramento Groundwater Bank. And that project is essentially how the region can get water providers that have access to surface water, whether that's from the American River, Folsom Reservoir, or the Sacramento River, and physically put those water molecules in the ground and then extract those at a later date, whether that's the agency that puts water in the ground or a neighboring agency that could then leave water, say in Folsom Reservoir, for the city or another water purveyor to take directly from the reservoir.
Thank you.
I'll move consent, item number three.
A second. We have a motion and a second on item three. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla. Councilmember Chalem Chirla. You might be muted. Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes.
Speak loud, this is YK. I'm so sorry. Yes, my apologies, yes.
We'll record you as a yes. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to item eight. Public hearing, resolution one zero eight eight seven. You have staff report on that?
He's coming. Yep, go ahead, Zach. Come on down.
Turn me off a little bit, Krista. Typically, you would read what the public hearing is.
No, and you walked all the way around instead of going the short direction and just coming right here.
Give myself a little time for it to, to read the intro.
Dramatic entrance.
I appreciate that. So I'll go ahead and read the resolution. So resolution number one zero eight eight seven, a resolution approving the final engineer's report for the following landscaping and lighting districts for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. American River Canyon North, American River Canyon North number two, American River Canyon North number three, Blue Ravine Oaks, Blue Ravine Oaks number two, Briggs Ranch, Broadstone, Broadstone number four, Broadstone Unit number three, Cobble Ridge, Cobble Hills Ridge two, Reflections two, Folsom Heights, Folsom Heights number two, Hannaford Cross, Lake Natoma Shores, Los Saros, Natoma Station, Natoma Valley, Prairie Oaks Ranch, Prairie Oaks Ranch number two, Prospect Ridge, Sierra Estates, Silverbrook, Steeplechase, the residences at American River Canyon, the residences of American River Canyon number two, Willow Creek Estates East, Willow Creek Estates East number two, Willow Creek Estates South, and Willow Springs.
Catchy title there, Zach.
Thank you. So I'll go back to my introduction. I'm Zachary Paris, your municipal landscape services manager here at the city of Folsom. Before you this evening is the final engineer's report for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. It encompasses all thirty of our landscaping and lighting districts here in the city of Folsom. This final report has been modified slightly to reflect the new scheduled maintenance costs pursuant to a new landscape maintenance contract that was approved by the council a few weeks back at our June twenty-eighth meeting. This change in cost for scheduled landscape maintenance was the only modification made from the preliminary report, report that was approved on May tenth to the report that we're presenting this evening. There were twelve districts that were eligible for CPIs this year, two of which are being utilized. The districts that have CPIs that are being utilized are Broadstone Four and Willow Creek Estates number two. Couple of the projects or more notable projects we'll be working on this year are the renovation of the interior village signs in Willow Creek Estates South, also known as Lexington Hills. We'll be re-landscaping the entry of American River Canyon North, so that's the intersection of Oak Avenue and American River Canyon Drive. And then we'll also be re-landscaping one of the entries in Prairie Oaks Ranch at Grover, so across the street from Folsom High School. Some of the other projects we'll be taking on this year are converting some of our older standalone controllers to newer centralized controllers that have flow sensors, master valves, things like that. So they can detect a leak and shut the water off if there is indeed a leak. We'll also be continuing the implementation of our lateral fuel removal program and continuing to retrofit and change out old HBS streetlights to LED lights. That concludes my presentation for you this evening. I also have our assessment engineer, SCI, with us if you guys have any questions.
Any questions? And just a reminder, this is, we have a revised staff report from what was in the original packet. And that should have been available for anybody in the audience who's concerned about this on the side table.
That's correct.
So if you have no questions of staff, do I have a motion?
I'll move resolution one zero eight eight seven.
Sorry, public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to address this, this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Going once, going twice, gone, public hearing closed.
All right, I will move resolution number one zero eight eight seven.
You have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. That moves us on to convene the joint city council meeting between the city council, Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, south of fifty parking authority. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council and board members Aquino.
Here.
Chalem Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Hal.
Here. Moves us on to our consent calendar. Items nine and ten.
I will move items nine and ten unless someone wants to pull it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Members Aquino.
Here, yes, sorry.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Are you going to say seventeen again?
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. Which moves us on to item eleven. Krista, please.
Eleven is public hearing, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, city of Folsom, CFD number twenty-three, also known as Folsom Ranch, improvement area number three, special tax revenue bonds, series twenty-two. Before you tonight, you have two resolutions, resolution number one zero eight eight four of the city council and resolution number zero zero nine, Folsom Ranch FA of the financing authority.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members. Stacy Tumani, CFO, and tonight I'm presenting the community facilities district number twenty-three, improvement area three, special tax revenue bonds, series twenty-two. For some background information, the council approved CFD twenty-three improvement area three back on May twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty. Then in December of twenty-twenty-one, change proceedings were completed to amend the boundaries and the rate and method of apportionment for CFD twenty-three improvement area three. This improvement area provides for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements to serve property within that CFD. These public improvements include the backbone infrastructure such as transportation, water system, recycled water, drainage, wastewater parks, parkways, and open space. And also provides for the subdivision improvements such as underground utilities, subdivision roadways, street lighting, sound walls, and landscaping. We have a map here of improvement area three within CFD twenty-three. This encompasses phase one and two of the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch active adult communities. Staff is proposing to issue the series twenty-two special tax revenue bonds at an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars. The proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, fund capitalized interest, and pay a certain cost of issuance. I'll note that the original staff report estimated capitalized interest would be through September first of twenty-twenty-two. It was proposed by the developer to extend that, and the city has agreed. So likely, the bonds will be funded with capitalized interest through September first, twenty-twenty-three. And you received an updated staff report noting that change. The recently appraised value of the property within CFD twenty-three improvement area three is over one hundred and ten million dollars. In compliance with the city's CFD policy, the value-to-lean ratio is eight point two to one. The policy is that it must be at least three to one. Also, in compliance with the city's policy, is the projected tax burden per parcel be one point six eight percent for single-family high-density units and one point six five percent for multifamily low-density units. By approving these resolutions, you're approving the form of various required documents that are listed here on this slide. And you are also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents and take appropriate actions to prepare to issue these bonds. And with that, I'm recommending approval of resolution number one zero eight eight four and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, resolution number one, number zero zero nine, FRFA. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
No questions.
So we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
I will move resolution one zero eight eight four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes.
I'll move resolution number zero zero nine dash Folsom Ranch FA.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. So we will adjourn the the joint city council meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting and move on to new business item twelve.
New business item number twelve pertains to the general municipal election scheduled for November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. You have two option resolutions before you tonight, resolution number one zero eight eight nine or resolution number one zero eight ninety. Along with that, you have related ordinances, again, two options, ordinance number thirteen twenty-eight or ordinance number thirteen twenty-nine.
Good evening, everyone. By your unanimous direction to me at your last meeting, we are tonight bringing ballot language to you for your consideration to put a measure before the voters in the November twenty-two election to increase our sales tax rate. You asked us to bring back two options for your discussion and ultimate direction, a half-cent increase and a full-cent increase. Just to briefly revisit some of the points in my presentation from your last meeting, just in case some are joining in on this issue for the first time tonight. Many of our neighboring cities have approved local sales tax increases in recent years, but Folsom's rate has not been raised and remains at the minimum seven point two five percent plus point five, fifty, point five percent for the countywide Measure A transportation tax. And remember that if you consider a one-dollar purchase, we as a city don't actually get seven point seven five cents. Our portion of that is just one cent. If the voters were to approve a local sales tax measure, the entirety of that portion would go all to us. So voters would be directly funding their own city for their own services. If voters approved an additional half cent, the sales tax revenue received by the city would increase by about eleven million. And if they approved an additional one cent, it would yield an additional twenty-two million annually. And traditional estimates show that about forty percent of sales tax is paid by non-residents. Again, as a reminder, and by way of comparison, Roseville already has a half-cent increase, Rancho has a full cent, Sacramento has a full cent, Davis has a full cent, and West Sacramento has a full cent. I know this council is well aware that the general fund is struggling to keep up with basic needs as it is, including employee retention and recruitment, and that we have discussed many times the very significant budget shortfall our city is facing in the next couple of years. Our property tax revenue continues to do exactly as we projected. Our sales tax revenue unfortunately has been knocked off its trajectory. Nearly every general fund department, including police and fire, are already under-resourced and understaffed. Brian Godby with Godby Research is again here with us tonight. He conducted our polling, as is Bonnie Moss with Clifford Moss, who conducted our community survey. And with that, I will turn it over to city attorney Steve Wong, who will take you through the details of the language and the process. Thank you.
Thank you, madam city manager, and good evening, madam mayor and the members of the city council, Stephen Wong, city attorney. As the city manager indicated before you tonight, is an item seeking your approval to place a local sales tax measure on the November election ballot. On November eighth, eligible voters in Folsom in council districts one, three, and five, as you know, will be asked to elect a city council member in their respective districts. And if approved by the city council, all eligible voters throughout the city in all five council districts will also be asked to vote on a local revenue measure submitted to the voters by the city council. As the city manager indicated, the current tax rate in the city of Folsom is seven point seven five percent, except the city's share is only one percent of the purchase price. And tonight, the city staff is proposing two options for the city council. Option one is a half-cent sales tax and option two is for a one percent sales tax. The proposed revenue measure is a general tax where one hundred percent of the proceeds remain locally in the city. That means the city will not have to share any of the proceeds with all the jurisdictions, all the agencies, as we are currently required to do with the existing sales tax. As a general tax, the proceeds can be used for any general governmental purposes. However, the new sales tax will require an independent annual audit and be subject to citizens oversight. Once submitted to the voters, the tax measure will require a simple majority vote to pass. That means fifty percent plus one of the votes casting in favor of the measure. And if passed, the new sales tax rate in Folsom will be eight point two five percent for a half percent increase or eight point seven five percent for a one percent increase, depending on the council's selection tonight. Both tax rates are comparable to our neighboring jurisdictions. Here is the language for a half percent sales tax measure. It is titled the Folsom Essential City Services Maintenance and Investment Measure. And very similar to this tax measure, here's the language for a one percent sales tax measure. The difference is one half percent or one percent and eleven million dollars approximately in revenue or twenty-two million dollars approximately in annual revenue. And with that, staff is respectfully recommending that the city council adopt either resolution one zero eight eight nine for a half percent sales tax measure or resolution one zero eight nine zero for a one cent sales tax measure and approve either ordinance thirteen twenty-eight or thirteen twenty-nine for submission to the voters. As some of you might recall, because you are submitting the measure to the voters, is the ordinance does not require introduction or first reading. You are merely approving the ordinance to be submitted to the voters. But please note that at least four votes of the council is required to submit the tax measure to the voters. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions of the city attorney?
No questions.
Or the city manager?
I guess, are we going to, are we going to, are we going to read this letter into the record that we received?
Which letter?
From Mr. Delp.
No, we have no.
We don't typically do that.
We're not reading those into the record anymore.
Well, then I will, I will ask the question that is embedded in it because it's a fair question. It, it basically raises the question of whether there is a behavior change likely to be caused in shoppers by this type of sales tax increase. And my, my gut tells me, not really based on my own personal, you know, activity, and knowing that the totality of the money that an average family spends on goods that are subject to sales tax, if they've spent it. subject to sales tax, if they've spent it all in Folsom, we're talking about maybe $100 of extra money in a given year. But is there any evidence that there is a change to people's behavior when sales tax goes up by this relatively small amount?
And before you answer that question, Stacy, I'm just gonna add one thing to it that I honestly suspect that Mr. Delp is not aware of, and that that is, we have the lowest sales tax in the region because of Roseville, City of Sacramento, Davis, I believe, Rockland. Everybody else has done this, with the notable exception of Elk Grove, but then they have a casino. So that's the only difference. So right now, we are the lowest one, and even with the half-cent, we're still going to be lower than most of the other jurisdictions in this region.
Yeah.
He may not be aware of that.
Yeah, it's not Rockland, but it definitely is Rancho Cordova and Galt as well.
And Roseville.
Could I ask Mr. Monty to speak to consumer behavior?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a fair question, though. That's why I wanted to make sure we talked about it tonight.
It is a fair question, and if that were true, we would be getting all of the other jurisdictions' sales tax revenue here, because we've been the lowest.
Oh, I'm sure we are.
Quite a long time. There is no evidence to that. People don't generally want to go to a different target in a different area and seek out the lowest rate instead of just paying the extra dollar on their $100 bill.
Unless you live right on the Oregon border.
No, they would, they would do it with a car, but the problem is the car has to be registered where you live. So, you know, that's a really big-ticket item that it would otherwise work for, but it's California, so it doesn't.
I do just want to point out, though, that, so the City of Citrus Heights, I don't believe, has an additional sales tax. There's lost. And then Placer County's sales tax rate is 7.25%. So when you add in a 1 cent for Roseville, that makes it 8.25. Ours starts out at 7.75, and then we would add either a half or a full cent.
Correct, because we have that half-cent Measure A on top.
Which every other jurisdiction in Sac County also has.
Correct.
And then, I guess the other question I have is the, the proposed ballot measure kind of like grabs everything and throws it in there. Is there some magic to the sequencing of those things? Because all, all valid, but people could interpret this to be prioritized in some way. And I feel like staffing both of our public safety departments is probably the principal reason that I'm going to ultimately be in favor of moving forward with this. And we kind of, you know, single out our firefighters. We love them, but we single them out as first, and then go to parks and potholes and wildfire prevention, and the police department kind of gets mentioned down in the middle of the paragraph, so.
Is that because F comes before police, potholes, parks?
I don't know. It may be happenstance. I'm just curious if there's any magic to the ordering of this.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bonnie, could I ask you to speak to this? This is Bonnie Moss, our consultant.
Sure, can, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, Bonnie, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So yes, we have been very deliberate in the ballot question wording. It's based on the research conducted by Godby Research, as well as what we have learned doing many, many, many of these measures across the state and being legally compliant. So the answer is yes. We have been deliberate in crafting the very best wording, order, choice of words from a standpoint of what we know your unique universe of voters has told us in research and also to be compliant legally.
Gotcha, okay. While there is some cynicism in politics and ballot language.
And it is also the city council and the city's primary focus, public safety, as you know.
Yes, certainly. Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Any other questions? Because we do have requests to speak on this. No other questions? Loretta, you are up. Hattinger, that's right, we still haven't given you just the one name.
That's right.
Like Cher?
But it's, you know, it's that familiarity thing, so.
Well, I don't have as long hair as Cher. The previous effort to increase the sales tax failed, and it was largely out of the distrust of how the money was going to be spent. And the distrust of government at every level is no lower now than it was then, and it certainly is not any higher here in Folsom, maybe some. The concern that you could possibly do to address this issue would be to create a concrete spending plan that would be enforceable. I know that there's no such mechanism now, but I really would not like to hear us say we can't. Folsom in the past, as Carrie can testify, has been an innovator. We were the second historic district in the state many years ago, and that was been followed by lots of upfront innovation. So I think if you would task your city staff with coming up with some sort of way that the voters could trust how the money would be spent, the extra dollars, and not just go into the general fund in an amorphous blob, I think you would stand a lot better chance of getting the answer that you hope for. I certainly would not argue with the finance department's assessment that the money is needed, but a lot of Folsom citizens are not that clued in, and that distrust of government looms large. Please try to find a way to make the proposal more concrete.
I, Loretta, I think what, there's a fine point that you might be missing here, and I'm gonna go back to where we were in 2018. 2018, all that money was going to be spent on parks. It wasn't going to the general fund, it was going to be spent on parks. And when you define...
Mayor Howell, I just want to clarify, it was also a general tax. It may have been marketed more toward parks audiences, but it was the same product.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the difference here is if we had a list of what those projects were going to be, it would require a 2/3 passage, and we know that, that we don't have a prayer of getting 2/3. So if we do it this way, we, we could pass it with 50% plus 1. That's, that's why we're talking about the way that we're talking about it.
Well, I just hope that it works then, because I certainly...
We gotta see if it's even gonna, we gotta see if four of us agree.
I certainly have a lot of ideas as to what you could put on that list of projects that need to be funded, so I'll just call out one of them, a piece of city property that has been neglected for 20-plus years. No maintenance for the Chinese diggings, and that's just one.
Loretta, you were here for the budget discussions, and there's, there's a very, very long list, and some of the things near the top of that list include retaining our employees and paying them appropriately, so.
Well, I don't disagree with that. As a retired city employee, I'm really glad for you to be able to retain and take good care of your employees, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other needs too that at least need to be in the rotation. Something ought to come up a little more often than 20-plus years. And that is a very deep concern for a lot of residents when they see. I would just wonder how often anyone actually looks at the list of goals and policies adopted in the general plan. The historic district specific, the historic district, the historic preservation master plan was adopted 20 years ago, and it's not been updated since. Meanwhile, the Parks and Rec master plan has been adopted, has been amended multiple times. I'm just saying, the funds are limited, they need to be spread to all the priorities, not just focusing on the status quo. Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. Any other questions or of staff? Anybody wanna?
I'm willing to make a motion, and we can have further discussion about that motion if necessary. I'd like to move Resolution Number 10889, which is the half-cent sales tax proposal. And then subsequently, I would move the other that matches up with it.
So that would be 10889 and...
Well, I'll move 10889 for the moment, and then I'm willing to move the sister after we discuss, if that's necessary.
Okay. We have a motion. I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Well, I'll start the discussion then, before we get on to voting about this. The, the, our, our finance director has, on numerous occasions over the last two years, three years, made it clear that the structure of the revenue that we receive in the city was not keeping pace with the escalation of costs to operate the system of the city as it exists currently, which means the staffing levels that we have, which means the facilities that we have, which means the maintenance responsibilities that we have. All of those things keep getting more and more expensive all the time, and we are living right this minute through a bit of a blip where there's been some, you know, noticeable cost increases across the board to everything that all of us do. But that has been a blip on an upward scale that's been going on for a good, long time. And we have had discussions about going down multiple tracks in terms of trying to find ways to increase revenue from economic development and use of city's facilities, trying to raise revenue that way, finding efficiencies where we can in the various departments, which is ongoing. All of the, both of those are excellent and things that we should be always doing, but looking seriously at the way that we collect revenue is an essential part of that three-legged stool. This is a step towards avoiding basically those two lines separating from each other in short order here, because our, we will be cutting into services, or we will be cutting into our other funds.
Or our personnel.
Or, well, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna cut services, which is my proxy for people, and we're gonna, you know, have to change the way that we take care of the grass and the parks and the painting and the streets and everything else, and we're gonna have to reduce staff, or we're gonna need to raise revenue. So this is an attempt to do that. At the same time, a half-cent is a relatively small ask for the average homo, the average resident here in Folsom. At, you know, at the rate that people spend money on things that are subject to sales tax, for an average California family, this is probably $100 in a year. It's just not that much money, and that's assuming that you currently do all of your shopping for those taxable goods only in Folsom. If you shop in, as the mayor pointed out earlier, Sacramento, or Roseville, or Rancho Cordova, or Galt, or any number of other places, you're already paying this higher sales tax. And when all of those people from those places come here, Folsom is on sale, sort of, right? So when we raise this, you know, when we place this half, when and if we put this half-cent, you know, into place, something like half of it will be paid by visitors to the city. So it's the least impactful on our residents, and it's the most beneficial to our residents. So that's why I'm willing to move this forward. I have no particular zeal for paying additional taxes, but I tell people all the time that I live in Folsom for a reason. It's great for all kinds of reasons, and city services is one of the key ones, and I want them to be, I want us to be safe, I want us to have the right kind of staffing, I want our parks to be clean and well-maintained, and I think this is a small step towards maintaining that for the, for the future.
And I'll just go on, because I've been here, been sitting on this council for such a long time. This has come up a handful of different times in the 24 years that I've been sitting up here. And I think people thought that it was amusing, because I'm the only Democrat that sat on this, on this council for a long, long time, and I was always the one that was most opposed to, to doing any kind of sales tax increase. But again, because of the amount of time that I spent up here, having been through a recession or two, having been through times when we ended up by attrition, retirement, and layoffs, lost 20% of our staff, we are, we are just not in a situation to weather this storm. A half-cent sales tax would generate about $11 million annually, and I think that's a pretty reliable number. By comparison, there's no way to increase our sale, our property tax by $11 million annually, and we would basically have to nearly double our, our, our sales tax, generally speaking. And if we doubled the hotel room nights, if we could somehow magically multiply them by 2, even that only generates another $2 million a year in TOT revenue. This potentially is a big number. It can go a long way into solving the problem with the financial cliff that we are absolutely positively headed for. I do not want to have to suffer the pain that the city and the residents will suffer if we get to that financial cliff, which we expect to get to sometime next year. I think maybe some of my colleagues would like to put this off for two years and do this during the presidential election. I don't think we have two years. I don't want to do this at all, but I don't see any other way out. Everybody else is already, everybody else in the region has already done this. As Mike said, Folsom's been, you know, the sales site for quite a while. The consultants have told us that 40% of this $11 million is going to be paid by people that don't live in the City of Folsom. And just based on what I see in, in my small business here in Folsom, I know the number of people that we serve that don't necessarily live in Folsom. They live, they live in Elk Grove, they live in Antelope, they live in Eldorado Hills. We get a lot of people that come through, that come through our establishment that are not necessarily Folsom residents, and I would, I would go as high as at least 30% of those people. And I, you know, I kind of joke with them and say, "Thank you for visiting, and we love it when you come and spend your money here and then go home." And, you know, and they kind of laugh about it, but, but that's exactly what happens, and they understand that. So if, if we can keep ourselves well back from that financial cliff and not go through all of the, the, the revenue that we've had to rebuild when we, when our reserves got down to less than $4 million a few years ago, knowing that the sales tax generation, in, in part, because so many people are in fact buying stuff online or, you know, using other, other mechanisms by which the sales tax is not staying within the City of Folsom because they're not shopping brick and mortar, and they're, you know, doing all sorts of other creative things, because I guess it's more convenient for them, I, I don't know. I'm not an online shopper, never been that way, and, you know, but then I rarely leave the, the city limits, because if I'm gonna spend any money, I'm spending it here. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will support me on this, because I, I, I don't see any other way out of this. And I have been the most adamantly opposed to doing this for many, many years, and I wish there was another alternative, but I've been racking my brain for the last year over this, and I just don't see one. So I will be supporting this.
Anybody else have any comments?
I have comments. I'm going to respectfully disagree with at least two of my colleagues here. I think a case could be made for why Folsom should pursue a sales tax measure, but I don't believe we have adequately made that case. In my mind, if we're going to ask the taxpayers in Folsom for a sales tax increase, we have to be doing more than saying, "We need money in order to maintain the status quo." There has to be a vision about investments that we can make in this city to ensure that 60, 70, 80 years from now, this remains a great place to live. And I understand there is, you know, we, we can't get specific in the ballot language in order to do the 50% plus 1, but I think we can offer a vision of what, you know, what we could do with 11... we could do with 11 or 22 million extra dollars a year. I don't think we have made that case yet. In order to make that case, we would need time to mount a campaign, to fundraise for that campaign. You cannot use taxpayer dollars to fund a sales tax measure, which means that we have to have community organizations, community groups, community stakeholders who are willing to do the fundraising and the campaigning for such a sales tax measure. It is currently July 12th. That means less than four months away, this would be on the ballot. As I said at the last meeting briefly, in my opinion, we have one more shot at this. It failed spectacularly in 2018. If it fails in 2022, that's it. You, you could not ask the voters again for decades to do this. And so I, I understand, you know, the mayor's point about, you know, maybe not thinking that you have time to wait, but if you, if you do it and lose, well, then you haven't gained anything. And so, you know, all the, you know, history says that the best time to pass a, a tax measure is during a presidential election year. And we know there's going to be a transportation sales tax measure on the ballot for Sacramento County anyway this, this November. So that would be two tax measures people would be asked to vote on. Obviously, there's no guarantee that the economy or inflation or anything like that is going to be better in 2024 than it is 2022. It very well could be worse. But I, I just think this is basically a repeat of what happened in 2018. There was no plan, there was no campaign, and it failed spectacularly. So I will not be supporting a sales tax measure on the 2022 ballot.
So as for, as for me, I will not be supporting this measure. And I've made it very, I've shared this with, you know, anybody who will talk. I think, you know, when I look at the past year and a half, we've had the opportunity to focus on a little bit on economic development, on, you know, taking, you know, taking some of the resource, looking at, looking at our budget, where do we have opportunities? You know, we had ARPA money that got put on two really big projects that could have driven tourism for our city last year. And that was, at the time, it was not important or not something we wanted to focus on. And so I think for us to go to the voters and say, we want more of your money, yet I don't think we've done a due diligence to try to look at how we can use the resources we have to generate more revenue. You know, I, we, I've been talking about strategic planning for what feels like a long time because I think that is a way for us to look at just how can we be more effective with what we have. And we started strategic planning and early, you know, at the beginning of the year. It didn't pan out the way that I had expected it to. I think that some of the best use of our money is to really start looking at, well, how can we do some strategic planning and, and be able to, to just look at how we could be better stewards of what we have today? And so I will not be supporting this measure.
YK, any comment?
Yes, Mayor. Mike, I'm, I'm going to say some words. Please don't take otherwise. I was following our colleagues, my colleagues' statements. I have been elected for the last 18 months, and I know Mike made a comment, sorry for my calling you. You might have seen before I joined, the economic development, what exactly our city has done? I haven't seen anything tangible from either our city administration side, including city council, in a tangible way. This is what we have done in the last 18 months. This much revenue we have generated. We put our best efforts. Still, we were able to generate a million dollars revenue or $2 million. I did not see that one. And also, I looked at the budget, I think, you know, city manager under Stacy Knows, I ask so many questions to them. I go line by line, department by department. I use my state experience. And I, we do have a room, that's in my opinion, again, it's a, a person who is reading that budget, elected official here as a council member, looking at one more time our spending in the operations and maintenance, how our programs has been spending, how our programs are generating revenues. If we can go through that, our budget is $248 million. That's quite a bit. That's quite a bit. And I'm looking at here, the budget, you know, the current budget document, and from the general fund, our salaries are going to 70%, 71%. I, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, you know, definitely, you know, touching on that side because of the benefits and salaries has been established, hardworking state employees, city employees here. But on the other side, we do have quite a bit of procurement, we do. And I know, again, it's me, what I see it is, when we go more close look at it and relook at, are there any processes we can put in to improve our procurement evaluations and the negotiations with the vendors to save some funds? There is a room for that one as well. I know I mentioned this even in the last city budget time, I'm repeating the same thing. If we can go on and on, there are some ways where probably we as a, a city have tried and then exhausted, then at least I myself as, you know, on board with what our city is doing. But I'm not there yet to, to, to see, city has done everything they could in terms of savings, in terms of generating revenues, in terms of revisiting all our programs. I'm going to say this one word, it's not, you know, no negative on any of the departments. Just a number, for our aquatic center, we generate revenues about $850,000 per year. About. Whereas we spend $1.75 million, aquatic center. Yes, we are providing the service. I'm not advocating that we have to close our aquatic center. I'm just taking an example here. How do we improve the revenue? So that's a, a, a simple example. How do we do that public-private partnership? I haven't seen it in the last 18 months, but I'm going, I want to give it, give a credit to my colleagues. They probably might have seen before me. So once we try it, probably I can definitely see it. And on the same time, I think our finance director is consistently telling the city council, we are going into red. We are going into deficit, starting from next year, 1 million, 1.5 million. She has the numbers she explained to the public also. You know, I'm also looking at the reserves we are keep increasing. I know the city council charter said 15% reserves. Now we are at 22.43%. In 2022, 23.38%. So it is, keep going. I know, I want to save it. You know, again, you know, my origin, where I came, where I was born and brought up, save a dollar for tomorrow. I agree on that. But what, since we haven't done all this, probably we may pause on loading more money to our savings and use that any of those, you know, projected revenues. I think our, I have seen consistently last few years, the projections are going up on the revenues and cover that deficit for next few years. So in a nutshell, what I'm trying to say is, let's try, as a city, with the support from so many experts living in this town, including Chamber of Commerce and those big businesses, is there anything we can do to generate revenue, cut costs, or put the more efficient processes? After all, then suddenly I can go, you know what? We tried all this. We can be very visible and transparent to the public while we are doing all these ones. And suddenly, you know, public is not going to say, no, public, public safety is the number one. That's what the first statement in this ballot measure. Hence, I'm probably not ready to support this tax increase measure.
Okay. Well, you're going to be making yourself ready or not ready like right now.
Okay.
So we have, we get all of our comments. So do you want to call the questions?
Let me make one final comment, if you don't mind. With respect to Sarah, your comment about mounting a campaign, I personally wouldn't have put this resolution forward if I didn't believe that there were people prepared to do a reasonable and appropriate-sized campaign for this. And even at the short time, voters taken a lot of information about ballot measures in that four months, and we have, we have adequate time to do that. The suggestion from both of my other colleagues, Rosario and YK, that we need to continue on finding ways to economize within the budget and find economic development opportunities. I started out by saying we need to do all three of those things. Increase revenue, reduce expenses, and consider the sales tax measure. So I, it's disappointing to me that we feel like we're not transparent, YK, because I have, on numerous occasions, challenged people who claim that we are not transparent in our activity. I think the most difficult thing to do with this type of particular discussion is the fact that the five of us are somewhat gagged by the Brown Act. So we only get to have these discussions in this form and not have any other kind of preliminary discussions about, for instance, campaign planning or, you know, what it is that one of us may be really interested in doing with regard to finding additional revenue in parks without doing it here in a somewhat abbreviated format. So I, I'm willing to go ahead and call the, ask you to call the question. However, it seems plain that we do not have the support for this. I'm willing to table it till the next meeting if we're, if, if everybody's willing to do that and take a little bit more consideration of this, but otherwise, I'll withdraw my motion.
I, based on the comments, I don't see anything happening. I'd just, I'd like to get the question out there and I'd like the council members to say where they stand.
Call the question then.
So.
Councilmember Ziquino?
No.
Chalam Chirla?
No.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay, with that, we will move on to?
So could I make another suggestion?
Sure.
So it was suggested to me by Folsom resident Bill Romanelli, and I want to give him credit for this because he has a lot of expertise in this area. But I think we could take a look at the city of Roseville and how they did their sales tax measure, which was successful in 2020. It is my understanding that they put together a citizens committee to really understand the budgets for the departments, see what the needs were, and basically, you know, so that you do have these stakeholders who are, you know, would have some interest in helping with the campaign and stuff. And maybe we look at, we look at their model.
So Sarah, my notes here is an ad hoc committee to review the budget, I think would be a really good idea.
With, with the intention of making a recommendation for a sales tax measure.
For this year?
No, for 2024.
I will say, just for the, to add to the pool, meaning our consultants who are on the line, you know, have said if there's any interest in pursuing this in 2024, we absolutely should not just end our work here. It should be seen as we have a, basically a longer runway, that we don't just, you know, the council doesn't just say, nope, you know, and then we just stop talking about this. We continue to tell our story of need because it's, it's a significant story of need. I will be very, very honest with this group, as I've been before, that trimming and, you know, economic development, these kinds of things are, are things that we already do and they're very admirable, but they're not going to make up this gap. And so we're going to need to return with some very hard decisions about services we're no longer going to provide.
Well, in, in light of that, then, I, I agree that that's an excellent idea in terms of taking a look at this. But I, I'd suggest that whoever is mayor in January, that we bring this exact same resolution back with a suggested strategy for 2024 in January, 2023.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Do we have someone on the phone?
Yeah, Bonnie, I see your hand is raised. I understand you wanted to make a comment.
Yes, just wanting to add that I, I underscore the city manager's comments about the conversation that needs to happen with your community and a reminder that you had an extraordinary participation in weighing in on, on priorities and values that the, your community of residents cares about. When I see those kinds of results, I would, I just want to reinforce that the idea of a more robust citizen engagement effort makes sense leading to 2024 so that what we see is already a very high level of interest in maintaining the quality of life gets the attention on some of the other issues that you've all highlighted tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know we are not, not sure where we are going to go. I think Mike made a good point, next January, when the new mayor is here. Just want to express my interest if there is a citizen subcommittee and this council wants to go with adding one of the council members, I'd love to be part of that subcommittee.
That's, citizen subcommittees do not include council members. That's why they call them citizen subcommittees.
Agreed. Just not knowing how the definition of those citizen subcommittees, just want to put that out there, love to be part of those. I can bring my expertise from outside world. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that National Night Out is on August 2nd, and that's a night where our Folsom Police Department, Folsom Fire Department and city officials join hundreds of residents at neighborhood parties that have been organized by local neighborhood watch groups. And if you are interested in hosting a party, registration is now open and ends on July 14th. Also wanted to point out that the Folsom Police Department is hosting another 2022 Citizens at Academy, where you can learn more about the Folsom Police and Fire Departments. And we've extended that deadline until July 14th. There is a free public reception at the Gallery at 48 Natoma, right next door, this coming Friday, called Woven Works. It's an exhibit of intricate basket sculptures. I wanted to thank our very own city attorney, Steve Wong, who has just returned from yet another international US Army deployment. We thank you for your service. Mr. Wong serves us and, and serves our country every day, and we are so grateful. And I wanted to wish a happy early birthday to Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
My 39th birthday, thank you.
Council comments. YK, we'll start with you.
YK?
Think you're muted. No, I'm pretty sure he's muted.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And good evening, Folsom mayor. I would like to ask your, I would like to request you to see whether we can bring an agenda item or a presentation about those 24 units Bidwell Studios, the nonprofit organization is, has been maintaining. We want to see how things are happening there. I do hear, you know, people saying it is turning into a, a drug house. Maybe not. So we rather want?
I'm sorry, YK, what are you talking about again?
The Bidwell Suites.
Bidwell Suites?
Okay.
A presentation from that nonprofit to this council. It's a request to you. And also one more request about our Public Works Department. See whether they can bring us a presentation or an update about the major projects, how things are going on. That way we can share with the community, especially East Bidwell and Iron Point Interchange Improvement. That has been there and they're working on it, but it's a good, good idea to bring us up to speed. And also Empire Ranch Interchange as well to the freeway, Highway 50. So those are the two requests I would like to put it out there.
Okay.
In the next few weeks, next few months it can come. Other than that, my only request is, as I mentioned just now, just now, about the half-cent sales tax, even though we are sincerely saying, yes, it is going to be a public safety, we are going to compromise, you know, definitely the approach we are going to take, I have a confidence, and the strategies we are going to? we are going to take, I have a confidence, and the strategies we are going to put in, it is going to help the residents and all of us for a next move, whenever it is. So with that, I think I don't have any other things. Thanks to city staff for helping me getting remotely joined and participate in this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Wong for his service and let you know that we are happy that you are back here safe and sound. And because he's in the back of the room, I want to congratulate now Lieutenant Zalaya on his promotion. Sergeant Groomberg is going to have very large shoes to fill running that crime suppression unit, and I said at a previous meeting, we wish we could clone you, but we're happy that you, you're moving up the ranks and you'll be supervising a larger unit, so congratulations to you and thank you. The city looks fantastic. By the way, your CSU's done a great job. I, I just have one other request, and I kind of talked about this behind the scenes last year when, when Mike was mayor and with the city manager, there didn't seem to be the urgency to do it, but I do think the time has come, I think it came a long time ago, for the council to consider rescinding our state of emergency due to the pandemic. We still have that into effect. You know, at the last meeting, we said that we weren't going to do the call-in thing anymore. I, I realize COVID is still with us, I think it's probably going to be with us for the rest of our lives, unfortunately, and it just seems like we're going to have to learn to work with it. And I realize that maybe there are things like parklets on Sutter Street and stuff that, that we're doing right now and that we're, you know, because of executive orders or whatever, but we can take care of those things through the municipal code. So I, I would like to request if there's support from my colleagues, that we at least have a discussion in the very, very near future about rescinding that state of emergency for our city.
I also think it would probably be helpful if Elaine could tell us, just let us know what we would need to do and what she thinks we can do easily and quickly and-
Yeah, is there at least one other council member who would like to hear that? Okay, great, we'll bring it back for discussion then. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
I, it seems because I've had so much going on this week, like it was a million years ago already, but I just want to congratulate the chamber and thank all of the volunteers that made the rodeo a massive success this year. It was really, it was, it was the exciting, fun event that it always is. We had some really special guests as honorees there, including a, some families of wounded and veterans that we lost, and the couple from Folsom that saved somebody from a shark attack, so it was some interesting, you know, public interests or personal interest stuff like that, but make sure you get your tickets early for next year because they sold out on Tuesday of the week leading up to the rodeo, so that's all for tonight.
Now that you've made that shark comment, I have baby sharks on me. Rosario?
I would also like to congratulate the Choose Folsom team that sits under the Greater Folsom Partnership for an outstanding rodeo. I think for me, one of the biggest highlights was probably seeing Tyler Andrew and his family just being honored for his service and for, you know, just his commitment to our country. I also want to share, you know, I went on a study mission trip to St. Louis and Herman last, late last week, and we just got back on Sunday, and I want to articulate and share some thoughts for our next meeting, but it was a very good meeting. Also, some of friends of mine are buying a place at Toll Brother Regency, and I, it was really, first of all, it's so beautiful and it's such a neat place, and it was interesting to learn that eighty-five percent-
You're not old enough yet.
I know, I know, they told me, yeah. I had to wait like ten years, I think, ten or twelve.
Liar, liar.
Thirty-nine, at least ten years, yeah.
But eighty-five percent of the people that are buying in, at the Regency are from Folsom, so that was really neat to, to hear that. And also, I would love to get sometime soon on the agenda, just the strategic planning and what the plan is for, for that carry at some point soon. And also, happy late, or early birthday, Elaine.
Okay, the usual, please drive carefully. Tired of watching people run red lights and stop signs and speed, and all those rules apply to everyone, regardless of how old you are, how long you've lived in Folsom, or how late you are for your next appointment. That's why you should leave earlier. Pretend that your mother or the police department is driving behind you, because every now and then they actually will be driving behind you. Great job to the chamber and all the, you know, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers who helped at the rodeo. Mutton busting was a blast, as always, and thank you to Rosario, who, who ran all those little kids out there every night. It's a, it's a pretty cool, it's a pretty cool thing, but I was kind of surprised on July third, there was like some ringer kid that goes from rodeo to rodeo to rodeo. This kid is six years old, his family's pimping him out as a mutton buster. I hate to use that word, but this kid's done like, just before the July third, I think he'd already done like four rodeos in the last month.
Yeah, there are a lot of kids that, that go around rodeo.
No, and he didn't win, actually, and he had all of his own gear and everything, so, but the kid that did win, that was a really, really, really long ride, so it was really fun to see that. I haven't seen a ride that long in a long time, so.
They're cute.
And Mike's right, I, you know, to all those people, because I had people that were sending me emails, so are there any extra secret hidden tickets anywhere? No. You want to go to the rodeo?
Even we don't have those connections.
No, we don't actually, you want to go to the rodeo? Make sure that you order your tickets ahead of time. Showing up at the, at the gate is just not going to work, especially this past year because the weather was great, and I think it may be, might be the only time I've ever been to the rodeo where I actually had long pants on, long sleeve shirt, and a jacket, so.
It got really cold.
Yeah, it was very cold, and I didn't stay as late as you guys did, so. Anyway, Regional Sand is tomorrow. Everything seems to be going well in all the regional committees that I sit on. RT's doing okay. Marcus talked earlier about water, things seem to be somewhat stable for the moment. Great job on the news again the other night, buddy. You're gonna, like, you're gonna be a feature on the news all the time? Yeah, you kind of do have that little news anchor vibe going on. Anyway, thank you to everybody, and we are adjourned at eight thirteen.